Good evening, everybody. This is the Thursday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, meeting of the Goss Town Planning Board. We'll start with the usual introductions, beginning with Brian.
I'm Brian Rose. I'm the town planner.
Phil Devanzis, Selectment's rep.
Hello, Von Ruden.
Gellerbrook, Recording Secretary.
Tim Redmond, Vice Chair, sitting in for Chairman Yatton tonight.
Steve Dutton, Alternate.
Colas Adams.
Carl Foley, Alternate.
Thank you. We'll start with our administrative items. The first thing is, we have minutes, everyone has at their table, minutes of the non-public session, December sixteenth. We can hold these off until the end of the meeting if people want to have a chance to look at them. Or we can take a minute and let everybody glance at them and decide on them right now.
It's up to you, Mr. Chair, if you want to vote on them, or if you want to, you know, take a chance to read them during the meeting, or as you get a chance.
We'll just give everybody a couple of minutes here, because it's only three pages. Have you looked them over, Lo? Colas, you're all set?
Yep.
Carl, you okay?
Mm-hmm.
You're still reading?
I'm, I'm fine. I'm going to be extending.
Just wait for Phil. Phil, do you want to wait until we have a chance to read them, or do, because everyone else is all set? Do you want to?
Well, I don't have a problem.
Okay.
I'm, I'm all set.
Okay. Well, then, anybody have any corrections to the minutes of December the sixteenth?
None. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of December sixteenth, non-public session as presented.
I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Carl. Motion by Colas. All those in favor? Any discussion of them? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Stating.
So we have four, five, four, and one abstention. Yeah. Chair votes in favor. We have five.
Right, five, five zero one.
And one.
And these need to be collected.
These need to be collected. Everybody want to send them down, right now? And then, are there still some in the other packets on the table that we'll have to get later?
We'll make sure to pick them all up, then, after the meeting.
Okay, the second set of minutes was for the last meeting of January the thirteenth, two thousand and eleven.
I'll also make a motion to accept those minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion by Colas, seconded by Phil, to accept the meeting. Any changes or corrections anybody has?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Brian?
There was an email that I think probably all of us received from Kathy Hooton regarding the choice to have Carl be the alternate for the zoning amendment.
If we are going to discuss that, I want to wait till Alan is here. At his request, he requested that we do hold off on any discussion of that. Until he is here, and should he not make the meeting tonight, we can discuss it at a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
Agreeable with everybody?
Yeah, I guess I would just say that maybe we should wait on approving the minutes, in case, I, I don't know what Alan's input is, but just in the event we'd want to.
All right, then. I agree.
Change.
I agree. You want to withdraw your motions?
I'll withdraw the second.
Colas?
Yep.
Okay, so we have this, motion's been withdrawn, and we will wait until Alan is here. And if he is not here, we will hold the minutes until our next meeting. We really can't start until seven fifteen, I don't believe. Am I correct, Brian, or Lo, as past chair?
That's, that's what it says on the.
All right, then, we're just going to have to.
Can we take some time, then, to read the June, January twenty-sixth memo from the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectment?
Everybody has a memo on the, everyone has a memo in the back of the paperwork that's on the table from the Conservation Commission to the Planning Board, and to the Board of Selectment as well. We're going to discuss this later in the meeting, so this would be a good time for everybody to read it, as Colas has suggested. Actually, Brian, there's in the correspondence, in the F.Y.I., there's a copy of an impact fee report. Maybe we could discuss that now, since we have another seven minutes before we can begin our first hearing. It was, everybody was in our packet that was sent out, a copy of an impact fee report from Brian. Do you have anything to discuss about that, Brian, or is it just a matter of you just doing your job?
Pretty much, it's just me just doing my job. The gist of the report is basically to recap all of the impact fee, impact fees that were brought in by the town over the past year, over twenty, over the year 2010. And then also to document the, any dollars that were spent through the use of impact fees. And so it's split up, and it shows each separate impact fee, the public, public safety facilities impact fees, the recreation impact fees, the road impact fees, and the school impact fees. And basically the first three really didn't have spending. Actually, the the recreation impact fees showed payment of some money that had been done for rail trail match, nine thousand dollars. That happened this year. And then school impacts, impact fees, there was a two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar deduction for an architectural and engineering study at the school district, elementary facilities. That was authorized by the 2010 campaign, through the public, through the public vote. So, and that was to have two hundred and fifty thousand come from impact fees. So, that's basically the gist of what was, what was done.
Okay.
It's.
I just didn't know if you had anything to report.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a big deal. It's, it's nothing for you to make any decisions on tonight. It's just some information for you to be aware of.
Okay, another thing under the.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Lo.
Was there anything, any of these fees that were running close to the six-year time when we were in risk of losing?
Well, in looking at the recreation, if you look at the the eleven by seventeen pages in the back, you'll see, if you look along the top, there's a spot for a fee collected, and a spot for a fee dispersed. And then it breaks up each impact fee. And so if you look, the first page is filled out, and that's all been dispersed. Second page is pretty well all filled out and been dispersed. There's some question marks on one where I'm not sure if it was documented correctly back then, but it was several years ago when that money was spent, so. And then if, even onto the third page, it goes about halfway down, and that's where you see some blanks under the recreation column. That's where the recreation money has stopped being spent, and, and those monies were brought in in two thousand and six. If you look to the right, under fee collected, you can see that they're all of January oh-six through, you know, December of oh-six is in that column. So each impact fee is valid for a period of six years. So if this was brought in in two thousand and six, this money will be, need to be spent by two thousand and twelve, whatever month is appropriate, you know, when it, for when it was brought in. So, we've got about one year to spend those dollars in those accounts under the recreation column. So, those are the ones that are the closest. And from there on out, it goes to almost two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine as for the next impact fees that we'll need to spend, so we've got a little bit of time to save up some money there.
Thank you.
Have the appropriations. They're appropriated. The spending of the money has to be appropriated by the town.
Yes.
So, it's not in the recreational, it's not in this year's budget. We're going to run out of time. Next is suggestion to the Board of Selectmen to do something with them.
I, I do believe that the, some of the Parks and Rec money is sort of reserved for the T.E. grant. So that is to be spent, hopefully, within, some of that money is to be spent within the next year towards design and construction of the rail trail crossings on one fourteen. So that's, I believe where that's headed for.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions? Okay, for Jim and Barbara that came in, there's a, there's a paper in the back of the packet on the table that you did not receive. That's a letter from the Conservation Commission. I'd like you to take a look at that before, while I'm talking about this boring. We have a notification from the City of Manchester about a notice of public hearing for a cell tower at two thirty-five South Mammoth Road. They must have figured it was a regional impact. So if anybody here would like to go to the Aldermanic Chambers in City Hall, January the thirteenth, there is a meeting.
January thirteenth.
January the thirteenth. This is, why do we get this now, Brian? I just read it.
Not sure, Mr. Chair. That may have, that may have been the earliest that we could get it to you.
Okay, well, it was here in this packet right here.
They're, they're required to send out a notice.
All right, well, it's a move point since it's already gone.
Yeah, if it's, if it's within twenty miles of where the tower is going to be, then they're required to send out the notice. That's why.
That settles that. All right. While they're, while Jim and Barbara are catching up, we can begin our first new business item. It is map thirty-eight, lot thirty-six, a completeness, site review and site plan review hearing for proposed to reinstate the use of the religious assembly in the historical church building, former vestry shop. I'm going to let Brian bring everybody up to speed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the Granite State Chris Adelphians Church. They're located at eighteen North Mass Street. That's map eight, map thirty-eight, lot thirty-six. It's right around the corner here, so I'm sure most of us are familiar with it. The request is to approve a site plan to change the use from vestry shop to church use. The existing building was originally designed as a church. It's not been used as such for many years, and so the applicant is just looking to revert that use back to the original use. They did come in for a conceptual hearing a couple of months ago, and got some guidance from the, from the Planning Board as far as their site and what they should, how they should proceed. And so, what, that's what they're doing tonight. This is the zoning map of the, of the property. As you can see, there are, let's see, I actually have to turn this on, so. Maybe. There we go. Okay. All right, so this is the property right here. This is North Mass Street, Elm Street, High Street. The church sits out near the road. The property is zoned village commercial. It's adjacent to R.S.B.O. one, to the west, and residential one to the north. You can barely make out the topography on there, but the topography shows that it inclines as it goes up the street right here, adjacent to it. And so that causes them a little bit of difficulty through designing, and also just the, the small size of the site makes it also difficult for designing. The applicant, in their application, requested several waivers. First is for wetland and surface water conservation district delineation. Second is for a drainage study, required drainage study. The third is for a traffic study. And the fourth is for parking. And that's based on a letter from Derek Horn, which we have in your packets, from January fifth, two thousand and eleven, and also based on comments received from the Planning Board back on December ninth, when they were here previously for their conceptual hearing.
Brian, do you have a synopsis of the letter, so our place would have to try to weed through all three pages? Do you know what's going on in the letter?
Well,
Does he find that we can, we can grant it by continual conditional use? Which is different than when I read it.
My understanding was that there were several ways of doing it, but that the Planning Board could waive the parking requirement. And I have to find the section.
Isn't it, Brian? Doesn't, doesn't he conclude we have to do it by conditional use permit? And that's the provision on seven point five, point four, point two? Is, is, is this in the village, I think you said it's in the village.
Village commercial, yes.
So, but, but he says conditional use permit, but that, that section in the ordinance, so he cites, this says we can waive, so I.
Yeah, that was my understanding from reading the ordinance. And in his paragraph here, it says, "Planning board may waive some or all of the parking requirements." Well, he states the, the section there.
So Jim, is, is it, are you saying that if we grant the conditional use permit, then we can waive the parking as a part of that? Or is it not necessary?
You look at the ordinance section, and it looks like we can just waive, so I don't know. I don't know where he was finding, unless there was a misreading in it.
Well, could we, could we have Brian discuss this with him?
Okay, I see, I understand now. Never mind. I'm sorry. If you go back to the, on the the heading on seven point five, alternate parking arrangements, board may issue a conditional, the wording is a little awkward, but the board may issue a conditional use permit for one or more of the alternate parking arrangements in the following circumstances, and then they list these series of, of ones. And because that, that heading is in seven point five, which is the whole section, not just on seven point five, point one through three, it suggests that you, your waiver of seven point five, point four, point two has to be done by conditional use permit. I think it's just, it's a matter of, conditional use permit requires us to make certain findings. As long as you do that, the substance is the same, so. Probably I wrote this and didn't do a very good job of it twenty years ago, but it, it's a little ambiguous whether or not it's a conditional use permit or just a waiver, so to be careful, let's do a conditional use permit in which we waive the parking. As Barbara has a different deal, which she frequently does.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to accept this for, and find us not have a regional impact, or something along that line?
Yes, there, there is a we'll need to make that determination. And why don't I finish going through this a little bit, and then we can go get to that, yeah. So, due to the change in use, the site plan is required. They have hired their engineer and designed the parking area behind the church two handicap spaces, which was what the board had directed them to do, is to focus on handicap spaces on their lot, and to allow the rest of the parking to be done throughout the public lots within the town. This, the, the design that they've done keeps the parking far enough away from the building to keep the fire department happy. I know that was one of their concerns previously, that some of the lots that were, or the parking stalls that were shown on the conceptual drawings were way too close to the building, and so that was causing fire issues. Planning Board did give unanimous comments about, you know, using the public lots as a relief from the ordinance, so that's what they're moving forward with. One key consideration, there's a flood plain and a twenty-foot easement to the town for drainage, and due to the Autumn Brook that's adjacent to their property, and that may cause some issues as we go through review. We're still working on exactly what that's going to entail, but. Yeah.
Go ahead, Colas. Brian, would you mind backing up one slide, please? The second bullet says the applicant has gone and hired an engineer to design the parking area?
Yes.
And that's this plan? I see a surveyor stamp. I don't see an engineer stamp. Is that, are we specific to an engineer, or are we going, are we willing to accept the survey? It's a question I.
That's, that's just a terminology that I made a mistake on, I guess. Yeah. Okay, so there's also a ledge outcropping, as we pointed out the last meeting, and that is shown on the site plan. Yeah, the last thing is, well, I stated it twice, I guess, the flood plain, I stated up above. So they are within the flood plain. They'll have to follow the flood hazard overlay district that the town's incorporated for flood areas. And that's in section thirteen point two of the zoning ordinance. So, as far as recommendations, staff recommends that the board determine this project has no regional impact. Grant waivers, and I guess conditional use permit as well for the parking. And then, accept the site plan for review. Hold a public hearing after a presentation by the applicant, and then the plan is to continue the hearing to a date in the future, March tenth is the proposed date by staff, in order to give enough time for the applicant to respond to all, all of the staff's and any planning, planning board's concerns. So, I'll turn the time back over to the Chair.
Okay, they're asking for four waivers. The four waivers are a wetland and surface water conservation district delineation, the second one is a proposed drainage study, third one's a traffic study, and the fourth one is parking based on a letter from Derek Horn dated January fifth, and based on comments received from the Planning Board on December ninth at the conceptual hearing. Anybody have any comments or questions about the four waivers that are being requested? We're going to be asked to vote on them, so we need to discuss them before we vote on them, I assume.
Tim, I don't have a question on the waivers, but more of a point of order, since we have two alternates here and Alan's missing. But just pick, pick who's going to.
Yeah, you're right. All right. Well, I'm going to start with you then, since you brought it up. Let's start with you, Carl. I'll let Steve be the voting member on this one. Thank you for that, Steve. Okay. So we're being asked to determine about no impact and waive the items one through four. Everybody good with those waivers? Would you like to waive them as part of the acceptance only, or? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion from somebody. Jim?
Again, if, if, if we're going to waive it by conditional use permit, if that's, we just determined that's the the necessary way, way of doing it, you have to make findings. Look at page a hundred of the zoning ordinance. Certain things we have to establish, so you can waive it for acceptance purposes, and then.
That way we can clean it up for, for a final determination? Do you want to make all, you want to make it so all four waivers are for acceptance only? What, it doesn't really matter, right?
Why not?
So, looking for a motion on items one and two on page four, but the wavy items are for acceptance only, to be noted. I'll make that motion. Motion by Colas, seconded by Steve, to determine there's no regional impact and waive items one through four for acceptance only. Any discussion? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. So, just so I'm correct, are we going to ask for a presentation from the presenter at this point, Jim? I think that's the next point of order?
Yeah.
Okay. So at this point, if the board has no more questions, we'll ask Mike Dolberg to come forward and make a presentation.
Hello.
For the record, Mike?
I'm Mike Dolberg, Lance of Air. Many, many times in the past, but not in the recent past during the economy. However, we were, we were approached by Steve Smith of the Granite State Chris Adelphians for the field method church site to prepare a minor site plan specifically showing existing conditions and the two required parking spaces for, for handicap accessible. In the process of, of doing the survey, we found a couple of issues. So we've shown the boundary based on the D descriptions. This hasn't changed hands since eighteen eighty-eight, roughly. Eighteen ninety-two, something like that. Pardon me. And there was a stone header here that had a drill hole in it. We have a survey from nineteen thirty-five that shows, that shows it. Supposed to be a drill. a drill hole in a, in a piece of ledge here. Unfortunately, when they did the Autumn Street drainage project, it's all, it's all gone. All, all the, all the, and, and there were supposed to be two, two stones to set, this is before Summer Street was actually a, a town road. This, this lot came out, Summer Street was there, but it's before it was a town road. There was a stone bound in the centerline of the road, and the centerline of the road. That description hasn't changed. So, we have, we have a couple of issues. One, we have the, we have what we believe are the boundaries shown graphically. There's no way to replicate them on the ground, maybe until the spring, frankly. But, we do know that the east side of the channel is the boundary on the west of the side of the property. So, we know if we stay within those confines, we're, we're good to go. So, we've, we've shot the grades, we've shown the, the parking spaces that meets the ADA requirements for the grade. They're gonna have to get into the ledge crop a little bit, and the whole site is in the flood plain. So whatever dirt work we do, we raise it up, we, we would need a variance, but if we can demonstrate to the Board that what regrading we're going to do, and I'll, and I'll explain that, won't have an impact on the floodway, then we meet our requirement, we don't need a variance. In the northwest corner of the parking, we have to raise the grade up four inches. The northeast corner, we're gonna cut the ground by about a foot and a half, foot, ten inches. So, for cubic foot storage capacity in the floodway, it's actually a four to one net gain for the floodway. So we need the requirements, we're not, we're not, we're not creating a situation where we need to make compensatory storage someplace downstream or in the area, where we've created that. So I believe we need the ordinance, we don't have to go to the zoning board for that. And, the toe of the slope is the edge of the wet. It's very clearly defined through the Autumn Street drainage process, so that, that there's no meandering wetlands line. It's, it's very clearly defined when they recreate the channel. So that's the reason for that waiver. There's a couple of issues with the, the neighbor to the north. They think their lot comes from the south, but we have, we have senior titles, senior deed, and basically, all the deed dimensions fit on the ground along Autumn Street, but for some reason, their occupation got pushed to the south. How, we don't know. We're not going that far with our parking, we're gonna maintain it to the south of the hedge line that's there, and we'll work that issue with the others out later. It's, it's a non-issue for the site plan. Minimal disturbance, we're gonna create about an equal amount of paving to what's there now, you know, in addition. And it's all, I think we pitched it at one percent to meet the D requirements for the traffic turning, movements on the, the parking spots themselves. I don't think Megan's had a chance to review it yet, or the staff, or complete review, so in a nutshell, that's it. We await a TRC meeting and address any issues at that point.
Mr. Chair. Jim, please. This came up before, I think we, in typical fashion, kind of blithely said, oh, Megan would look at whether there have to be a drainage concern. But, and I understand, as, as Mike said, she hasn't had a chance to see it, but I guess we'd like to ask Mike if he's in a position, position to give us a statement on whether or not there, there is a drainage. He thinks there will be a drainage issue based on the work that's gonna be done. Collins, Collins can phrase that better than I can, but...
I, I don't think there will be a discernible increase. We're only talking three hundred, three hundred and twenty square feet of pavement additional to what's there now. We're actually gonna flatten that pavement out, so we're not gonna be increasing the, the velocity of any, that minimal increase, you know, we're talking about an area the size of where we all are. I think it's, it's minimal at best.
Are you satisfied, Jim?
Yeah, I just want something in the record.
Okay.
Put something, evidence in on it.
Anybody else have any other comments or questions for the, Mike, Barbara?
Mike, the area, I guess to the north of the parking area. I don't recall where the, where the grade is there on the property. Is that area as defined in your deed line appropriate for more parking?
If you wanted to do a bunch of dirt work, you could have up here, parking, you'd have to, you'd have to construct a retaining wall here. The flood zone comes down roughly at three oh seven up here, approaches the three oh eight, and it actually wraps around the church. So, I think this, this area up here is out of the, is definitely out of the flood zone, so we wouldn't have to worry about that, but...
Okay.
It, it seems to be, it's not really connected to the, where the church is, the grade. It's too much of a drop, so...
Is that grade natural, or man-made?
Uh, I believe it's natural, because there's a big ledge outcrop here, and if you drive up Summer Street, there's, there's a hump right there, it comes up as a hump, and then it flies back.
Thank you.
Okay, Barbara? Jim?
Not to be, sound like a, a snickety lawyer, but, the, if, if, if we find this has to be granted by conditional use permit, on page one oh one, there's specific evidence that we're supposed to have for us, and typically, we lead the applicant, who doesn't even know what we're up to, through these questions. So he'll give the appropriate answer, and if Mike wants to take a look at them, tell us, because they have to, we have to have evidence in the record to support these, because they have to make findings on them. It's under, on fifteen point four, point one, point four.
Read it, Mike, you got it, Mike?
Why don't we just hand it to him?
I do not have that.
He's a quick study, he'll figure out what he has to do. It's particularly fifteen point four, point one, point four, point three, point four, point five, point six, page one oh one.
I guess I'll, I'll, I'll leave it to Brian. Is, is this a permitted use under the ordinance? Church? It is a church. Was a church, it was a church for, I think they finished in eighteen ninety-four.
Well, the, are we talking about the use, or the parking that's for the conditional use permit?
Well, the use, the use has to be compatible, has to be, no, the develop, the use is specifically authorized in the ordinance as conditional use. Well, it's a good question, parking or the church, I'd say the primary purpose, which is the church, right?
Okay.
Otherwise, it'd be silly.
Well, yeah.
I don't think it's gonna have a adverse impact on vehicular pedestrian safety, the sidewalks on, on both sides of the street, and there's a, there's a marked crosswalk in here. And there's very little vehicular traffic, seeing as how there's only two parking spaces on site. I, I don't, I don't think that's a problem. They're not changing anything in the church, in fact, they'll approve the visual aspects through whatever they have to do for the new roof, and painting, what else they wanna do to protect their investment. It's already serviced by Town Water and Sewer. That's not, I don't believe that's gonna be a adverse impact to the town. Fifteen point four, point one, point five is up to the Board.
Okay, Jim?
In a nutshell.
Any more questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike.
Normally, we try to take our witness out to the horse shed beforehand, a coachroom, called Horse Shitting Your Witness, we didn't have a chance today.
You don't need to do it.
Since this is only an acceptance hearing, are we opening the public hearing tonight?
I think we've, we've gone beyond, we're, we're going on the merits now, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, well then, at this point, we're gonna open up the public hearing. Anybody from the general public have any comments or questions at this time? Everybody? Okay. Any more questions or comments for Mike, before we continue this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Quick question about the retaining wall, proposed retaining wall, what, what type of retaining wall are we talking? Just stone, block?
It's not even really necessary, there's only a, on that side, it's only a three, four inch fill. I just wanna make sure it doesn't do plowing, because there's a, there's a three foot, there's a three foot clear space around for the D requirements, and I just wanna make sure that whoever plows the stone, whatever, doesn't keep pushing the material down and into the wet. So we want, we want it to stay there, so, it's basically gonna be one or two blocks, those, just those ready blocks to keep it in place.
You asking what it was constructed of, Carl?
That, as well as what type, yeah.
Yeah.
In the plan, it's listed as a ready rock wall, which is what they used around the hardware parking lot, those, those precast concrete blocks.
I just didn't know how high it was gonna be, or...
Maybe six inches.
Okay.
Literally, it's just a, a belt and suspenders approach.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Brian?
Also, just, I, in double checking against the ordinance for the use of a church in the Village Commercial District, it's allowed by conditional use also, so, the church use and the parking thing would be allowed by conditional use.
We'll, we'll fill out the application in, have it due shortly.
Anything else? Seeing none? I'll accept a motion for continuing, for to continue this?
I'll move to continue it to March ten. I have a procedural question. Is there a separate fee for a conditional use permit? If so, I'd make a motion to waive it, because we're already into this.
I, I believe when a conditional use permit is associated with a site plan or other form, there is no fee. I think that's language that's in the application, paid documents that applicants receive when they fill out an application.
Wait for Brian to answer the question?
No, I just don't want him to.
Give Brian a minute here and then we'll...
Yeah. How about if I can accept there is a, a fee, I would move that we waive it, because we're already, substance already reviewed it.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to waive the fee, if there is one, seconded by Jim, and seconded by Barbara. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative, it's a unanimous vote.
Let us bring up the hook.
Okay. Okay.
Then again, I'll move to continue this application to March ten.
Second, anybody second it?
Second.
And that was by Collins?
Yep.
Who said it?
Everybody's...
Okay, Collins. Seconded by Collins. Okay, the, the, a motion to continue this to March tenth, two thousand and eleven. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes in the, in the affirmative. Thank you, thank you. Okay, the second new business item tonight is map fourteen, lot nine, completeness and review for subdivision plan review. A hearing for a proposed three lot subdivision, creating two new lots. The owner is Lynn Paul, Saint Anselm's Drive, is owned to R two. Brian?
Mr. Chair? As you stated, this is for a three lot subdivision owned by Lynn Paul. Request is approved, the subdivision, it's adjacent to Holly Street and Saint Anselm's Drive. This project did come before the Planning Board, actually, several years ago, November twenty-sixth, however, the planning, project was continued to date uncertain by the Planning Board, with a, but a re-notification required. The history on this was, there, there had been a death in the ownership of the property, and so it sort of got tabled for a while, and so now it's being resurrected. New application's been filed on December twenty-third, and their fees have been paid. This is the, the zoning map and location map, I guess. It's just a little bit west of Route one fourteen, I'm sorry, east of one fourteen, off of Saint Anselm's Drive. Saint Anselm's Drive is right here, I believe this is Route one fourteen, right here, and Holly Street comes in right here. And, this whole area is zoned residential too, as you can see in this little note. The closest next zone is over here in the commercial zone, and the industrial zone along that same line. So everything there is, is residential too. The, the proposed access would be off of Holly Street for the two additional lots they're wanting to create. They would extend Holly Street to the end here. I believe it, it exists up to about there, and they would just kind of finish it through the, through the end, I'm sorry, yeah, you're, Megan's right. It exists to here, and they would finish it out to the end here. So, that would just dead end again at that, at that spot. The other lot, which is currently existing house already on there, has a driveway off of Saint Anselm's Drive, so that would be, that would remain the same. What's that?
I'm just having a hard time getting, if you go back to the map, I'm having a hard time getting my bearings, because it looks to me like Daniel Plummer Road is missing.
That's, that's not what we're...
Oh, maybe that's Daniel Plummer, okay, I'm sorry.
Somebody retell me where, what I'm looking at, because I thought I knew where Crockett Drive was, and I'm very confused.
There's a little flap on it.
I think I misspoke, I think this is Daniel Plummer Road here.
Thank you, okay.
That's Robin, Willie Puldesac is Robin.
Okay. I, I got that, it was that there was nothing between one fourteen and Robin that was causing me a problem, okay.
That was, I'm sorry, that was my mistake. I saw the road off to the east, and I immediately thought one fourteen. So, yeah, so that's...
Thank you.
That takes care of that. Uh, this, this project has previously been reviewed and, by staff and the Planning Board, so my guess is, is hopefully this can move through in a fairly quickly manner. Upon acceptance by the Board, staff can go ahead and do their review and make comments, and give those back to the applicant. I already stated about the access, I'll skip that. Recommendation is to determine there's no regional impact, accept the subdivision plan for review, hear the applicant's presentation, and hold the public hearing, and then continue the hearing also to the March tenth, that, date, in order to allow any comments to be addressed by staff, or by the applicant, from staff and from the Board. So, I'll turn the time, time back to the Board Chair.
Okay, Brian, I, I noticed that on page six, you're, it must be a typographical error. Number two is to waive requests in items one through four, is that carried over from the one to four accidentally?
That might have been, yeah.
Then that needs to go away?
I used, I used the template report, and that's what got me in trouble, I guess. Yeah, there are, there are no requests for waivers on that. That's just from, on the, yeah, page six.
From the previous application? Just wanted to be sure. All right, does anybody wanna make a motion about the regional impact?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, the finding that this project has no regional impact, and we should accept it for, for review.
So moved by Collins. Who was it seconded by?
Phil.
Phil?
Carl's the voting member.
A matter of fact, thank you for that. Carl is the voting member for this one, Steve, you'll step down on this one, thank you. I said I didn't call you, what's Alan call you?
Everything.
Everything.
Want me to just do it once, just to see if you feel good?
Go ahead.
All right, Carl's the voter in this one. Okay, so we have a motion to accept this, to determine there's no regional impact and accept the site plan review. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstinent? Okay, so it's accepted. Unanimous. Okay.
Are we gonna, can we hear this? We don't have much on our agenda. Can we have it rehearsed, noticed for a public hearing?
It was noticed for a public hearing, yeah.
Some of us have seen this before.
Well, if it's the incurrence of the board to move forward, do you wanna have a straw vote on that, or just? Everybody's willing to move forward?
I was expecting to have a presentation in the public hearing.
Okay. So we'll move forward. Guess we'll invite Mike back up with his other board.
And ask him how he managed to have his two appearances before us in years, on the same night.
Two for one discount?
My, my good fortune.
Thank you, Mike.
Brian...
For the record? Your name for the record?
Oh, Mike Dolberg, will answer there. Brian actually made my presentation for me. Just wanna extend Holly Street. This board was literally a minute away from approving the plan, subject to review and acceptance of the drainage by DPW. But, but Mr. Raymond at the last minute said, "Well, hold on, we had that happen before, and it didn't work out very well." So they continued the, the, the application to a date uncertain till we could work out the issues. And at that point, several things came up. The Mother's Day floods, the fact that there's no real drainage in Holly Street. And how are we, how are we gonna handle the drainage? And there was all kinds of, things went back and forth between Woodland Design and us and DPW. And then Mr. Paul became ill, and the project sat. But we're back to bring it to fruition and move forward. Basically, we're gonna have a turnaround of some sort at the end. Megan just gave me her comments. DPW would prefer a T and not a hammerhead. And we would remove part of the existing hammerhead here now to make it more of a driveway and not wide. So it would be a driveway, not, not too wide. Whether or not this, this forty by fifty rectangle gets reverted back to the owner who it has a condition of improving Holly Street, the Smiths allowed that turnaround to be put on their property, and the forty by fifty was, was made part of the right-of-way. The initial application wants that to be reverted back, given up by the town, back to the Smiths. Whether or not we can do that, the board select, we can do that, or it has to be done at town, we don't know. So that's not really a major issue, the forty by fifty at this point. But extending the sewer, the water, and we have a little detention basin in here to handle the minimal increase of flow. So we're gonna have to rework the turnaround at the end. But I believe that even under criteria, we'll be successful.
Any questions from the board? Okay, Phil?
Thank you. The note on the plan that I'm looking at mentions the municipal water for lots. The print's very small, so I can't quite see which lots they are. But the only concern that I have is even though it's municipal water in that area, there are a lot of private lines. And if the water is extended, you have three lots, one which are but Saint A's, and the other two that are all Holly. So I assume that Holly would be servicing two lots, the water from coming down Holly.
Yes.
Just the only concern that I have is that if it is a private line, that it'd be noted on the plan, so that people know.
Oh, oh, the existing water line?
Right, that water line, even though it's municipal, sometimes, sometimes it comes from the street on up, it's private. And what happens is, just before Christmas, there was a break. So let's say the project goes forward, you build two houses, people move in. Further down, there's a problem. Manchester Water comes, there's a problem, they gotta turn the water off from, you know, the street. These people have no water. Well, what do we do? What do you mean it's a private line? And I got that call just from Christmas Eve where water was turned off on residents in town. There's nothing we can do about it.
We'll, we'll confirm the status of that and have the appropriate...
Yeah, just so that they're aware that it's a private line.
Yeah.
Jim?
To the extent she can, can we have Megan or Mike review briefly the drainage issues?
Well, I was gonna wait and ask Meg if she had an opportunity to even look at this before we move forward with it. So I'm on the same page as you. At this point, we'll ask Meg if you have, have you had an opportunity to review drainage and different aspects of this project?
I did look, I looked at it tonight before I came here. And I have looked at, of course, I pulled out all the old plans and my old comments to kinda see what, you know, the issues were before. And, you know, as Mike had said, we were kind of at a point trying to come up with some solution, but then we kinda stopped working on it. I did have test fit data for up there. The seasonal high water table was about three feet down. The reason we're so concerned about drainage is that system is like totally over capacity, and there's problems down at the outlet and, you know, downstream. So a lot of times, we talk about just simple two lot subdivisions, that we don't get really hardcore drainage if it's just two lots. But we do if there's a problem. And I consider this one of those spots where we have a drainage issue, so we should at least make an attempt to do something. So there's not a lot of room to do things, so this was the idea that Woodland came up with, is to do a mini pond. It's kinda like what was done over at Fornier's, a very, like a shallow swale, two foot deep, kinda, you know, mini pond, I guess you'd call it. I saw on the plans that they were showing it as a drainage easement. I didn't think it was gonna be given to the town, because it's really only there to drain off that one lot, and that's it. I don't even think it's taking much water from the road, if any. It was just, they were trying to do something to make sure there was no increase. The increase is like, I think, I wanna say point one CFS. So, you know, there's a very, very minimal increase. They've done what they can to capture as much impervious area as they could. It holds the twenty-five year storm. Overflow is set right at the twenty-five year storm level, so the elevation is like right there. They're both, they're both for the twenty-five year storm, the elevation. I mean, it seems like a good solution. It doesn't intercept the seasonal highs. It's pretty close, it's right, you know, right there. It's a two foot deep swale, and it, it might be a three foot cut in one spot, but we're not like down into the seasonal high that I can tell by looking at the information. So, you know, I think it's a reasonable solution. There aren't a lot of choices. Previously, back in two thousand and six, we talked about leach and catch racing, a deep leach and catch. That's not gonna work, because we're into the seasonal highs, so that really didn't seem like a feasible option. So that's, and, yeah, the hammerhead idea, the reason I had talked to Mike tonight about just making it a T was that, right now, it shows the road comes to an end and the driveway comes off of the end. But when we're plowing, we plow into the both ends, and we would, that would be a constant problem and headache for those people. So the idea is you wanna, if we can, set this up to tuck the snow on each side of the hammerhead and have the driveway separate. So they're just dealing with a typical wind drill, like most people, then that's probably the better setup. So we'll, we'll figure that out. And I'll have to, I'm gonna talk with Mike about how to handle either a right-of-way or an easement around the ends of the turnaround, because what just happened with the other turnaround is we've got a right-of-way now, and if we wanna discontinue, it might be difficult. So I'm wondering if all we need is just an easement for the turnaround, if that might make things easier. So I guess we can talk about that, our TRC, try and figure that out, if that makes more sense. So that's it. My comments, I sent my comments tonight late, but there, there's nothing major. They're all minor comments about just a couple of things, discrepancies between the Woodland plan and the Dahlberg plan, so.
You mentioned you might not want an easement for the drainage swale itself?
I'm envisioning that as privately maintained.
Well, what do you think about when you, when it's part of the design here, and you come back five years later, and the people that bought the property don't like it, and they filled it in, and now it's gone? You have no jurisdiction over it, and it's part of, it's a design element of the plan.
It's similar to me, this is kinda similar to the Lally subdivision, where you had a driveway, shared driveway, the two lots, and they had a little mini pond for their shared driveway, you know, in their rain gardens. I mean, I thought of, and wanna recommend it, but I mean, you know, this might be a spot for a rain garden, but the seasonal high with the three feet, I don't know if they'd be able to make that work. But when you're dealing with just one lot, that's where that type of application is kinda used. I mean, you're right, that's always a problem. There's really a good and bad to every option we have, you know what I mean? The town can take on another little pond, or a resident can maintain their... I look at it as, okay, if someone's gonna say, "Well, that's the town's easement, come and mow my pond." I mean, you know, it's...
You don't do that, so that's, that's another, that's a moot point.
I'm just saying, people might call, you know, I mean, I don't want these people think we're gonna be out there all the time mowing it. I envision that that really just needs some regular mowing, and with this tight, small lot, I would think they're gonna want that area to be, you know, they're gonna wanna keep up their lawn maintenance and make it look nice. And if it's a two foot deep thing, they're just gonna go in there with their mower and keep it, keep it mowed down. I mean, I can talk to Carl about it. We, I wasn't planning on that being a town easement area.
Or they're gonna fill it in and make it flat, so it's easier to mow.
Well, what you do with that, like we do every time, we have a drainage maintenance agreement, and they have to maintain it. And if we drive up there one day, and it's filled, we pull out the agreement, and we say, "Here's the problem."
I just want you to have some teeth, in case something does come up.
Yeah, I mean, this is one of the things we're working on back at the office. We've got a binder about yay big right now, and we're trying to compile all of our ponds, all of our swales, private and public, all of the easements that go with them. Where are the discrepancies, you know? This is, that's what we're working on, because this is just becoming, you know, an issue. It's, we're getting more and more, we need to stay on top of it, and we're not. So we're trying to, step one is, pull together what we have, look at what we've got, you know, where are the problems and discrepancies? Who do we need to go follow up on, what private ones aren't being maintained? So we're getting there.
No, I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to be, you know, be preventive maintenance. Collins, you have something?
Just a comment, I mean, it's being shown as a feature on this plan, and we're gonna approve this plan, including all the features shown. So if at some point in the future it disappears, it would seem to me we'd have recourse to come back and say, "Wait a minute." You know, you violated the site plan approval, so...
But it's not a site plan, it's a subdivision.
Pardon me, Jim?
But no, you can't revoke, so, you know, people have already moved in, built houses, so you need some right of entry and an attorney's fees, recovery of cost provisions.
That's where the drainage maintenance agreement will come into play.
Okay.
Okay, we'll give you engineer's fees.
As long as you're comfortable with it, okay with us. Or me, anyway. Any other questions now that Mike has standing? Anybody else have any more questions for Mike before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing at this point. Does anybody from the public have any comment or questions on this plan? Wow, I love it. Eight oh five.
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Well, we wanna, if you'd like to have some action on this tonight, Jim, that's fine, but we seem to have... Yeah, now, now it seems to have changed. We have, we have a TRC and...
They just tried to put all the issues out in front of us.
Okay, 'cause you sounded like you wanted to...
I like Mike, but not that much.
Does anybody else have any more comments or questions before we move on?
And move, we continue this to the tenth?
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Collins, to continue this to the tenth. Any discussion?
March, March terrification.
March the tenth, excuse me. What did I say?
You said the tenth.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, March the tenth. Any discussion on it? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Chair votes in affirmative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good to see you all.
All right, now, we have a letter in the back of the handout that was on the table. It is, it's carbon copy to the board, it was sent to the selectmen.
It was a three-page packet on the desk.
Yeah, there was a three-page, and then addendum packet.
I'll just flick on the...
Do you want one, Jim?
Attached to back of the agenda.
He's got one. Just an extra.
Everybody on the same page? Okay. Barely. This is a letter to the Board of Selectmen, carbon copy to the Planning Board from the Conservation Commission. The subject is Conservation Commission and Planning Board Recommendations for Open Space Land Acquisition for Blackbrier Woods Open Space Subdivision, map nine, lot thirty-three dash seven, forty-six, and sixty. Everybody has hopefully had an opportunity to read the letter, and I'm gonna open the discussion up for comment.
Well, can we, can we have the representatives of the Conservation Commission?
Looks like that'd be fun.
Say a memo, tell us.
Actually, we have Kimberly with us, and would you like to address us tonight?
I'm gonna let David lead.
David's gonna handle it? Wow. Threw you under the bus, David. All right, David, state your name for the record, please.
David Neiman from the Gostown Conservation Commission. The gist of the letter is that we've, we've had a long series of public hearings, looking at the Blackbrier subdivision proposal. Throughout that whole process, we have, the Conservation Commission from the very beginning, recommended that the open space, which is a rather large area, one hundred and twenty-seven acres, when it was set aside, rather than it going to a homeowners' association with the town owning a conservation easement, like we've done with many in the past, we thought because of the recreational potential, passive recreational potential on this site, that it was in the interest of Gostown residents that this parcel instead would be held by the town, in which case the protection of it, the perpetual protection of it, would be covered by having a conservation easement with our local land trust, the Pascataqua Land Conservancy. This was the idea we presented from the beginning, it was discussed in all the public hearings, both before the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, the hearings that noticed the Butters attended. And by the time it got to the conditional acceptance by this board, it was left at, the board, this board could not determine, "Well, we're going to accept this land, because only the selectmen can accept land." And so we had to go before the selectmen and, and have meetings and hearings with them. And the recommendation was that either there's gonna be a homeowners' association created, and we do it the traditional way, or the town accepts the land with the conservation easement. At no point ever was this presented to the selectmen without mentioning the conservation easement. Every meeting I attended with the selectmen, we talked about the conservation easement. Two public hearings, we talked about the conservation easement. So when the vote came last Monday night, the selectmen voted unanimously to accept the parcel. However, they did not at that point, they, they broke off the notion of putting it into the conservation easement, moving that to the next Monday's meeting, where they would begin discussions on whether or not to consider having a conservation easement placed upon it with the PLC. I feel that this is inappropriate, because the recommendations from Conservation and from this board were always stating the conservation easement would be in place. Every public hearing which a Butters came to, that, that was the plan that was discussed. And I don't think it is correct for the selectmen to consider an additional different option from what was presented in all these meetings. I think that in fact would render what has been conditionally approved null and void, because now we're talking about really a different plan. If, if there's an opening left open for something other than its protected state down the road, then this, this is not appropriate. This is not the plan that was discussed. So I think that this should be pointed out to the selectmen as they begin their discussion next Monday, so that we can clear up what, I think it's just a misunderstanding, and, and move forward hopefully with the... And, um, and move forward hopefully with the, the selectmen initiating the work with the easement. A draft easement was prepared and sent to the town. It was not sent out for the town's attorney to review, because I, I believe the administration felt that, well, let's make sure the selectmen accept this first before we incur a legal bill. I, I mean, I think that's the reason for it, and that certainly I can see the logic in that, that makes sense to me, too. But we just, we and the Conservation Commission wanna make sure that this is understood, and, and we think and hope that the Planning Board agrees with the statement, and we'll also represent that.
One second, Jim. Brian, can you turn off the projector, is that? Uh, Jim, please.
But David said the approval that this board gave to the project required a, a conservation easement. I, I suppose we should see that approval, I have no doubt David's saying, but I, I don't, my recollection's pretty musty.
Yeah, it was subject to a satisfactory conclusion to arrangements for the easement as done between the Board of Selectmen and the PLC, because those.
That was expressly in the approval?
That's my recollection.
Mine as well.
I mean, I don't have the minutes available, but.
And then, is PLC willing to?
You know, they can find him.
Is, is PLC willing to accept the conservation easement?
Yes. They, they have drafted.
That's the one you referred to.
The draft that they sent to the town for review.
Jim, if I could be the devil's advocate here, um, we, we, we use the word recommendation. Is that, is that the?
Was it a recommendation, or did we require it as a condition of approval?
I don't know, I'm asking you, because we keep using the word, the Planning Board recommended that they do this, and I wanna be sure that we didn't, that the, the wording is correct in terms of.
That was my question, was it a condition of approval or just a recommendation?
I don't know.
There, there was a, the, the condition of approval, and this is, you know, in my own terms, but it was basically that, like David said, that they had to either get, um, get the approval of the, of the. Town to take over the land with the Piscataquod Land Conservancy to maintain it, or to get the HOA to do the same thing, to take care of the land and to maintain, and to do that maintenance. So, I mean, there was a condition of approval, that they either had to do one or the other.
Right, and I believe the issue was that drainage easement, whether or not the PLC would take it, with that being part of the easement. I guess the question is, is PLC willing to take the easement?
But that wasn't something that we were gonna get involved in, that's why it was up to them to do, right.
Well, if I may, that, I believe with the drainage, the, the bigger question wasn't, was really, who is going to maintain that drainage structure? You know, is the town going to take it over along with the road, was there going to be some sort of, um, private homeowners association that was responsible for the maintenance? And in the end, the selectmen did vote that the town would accept maintaining the drainage structure along with the road, as with every other road the town has accepted in the past. It's just that this was a new type of drainage structure and raised new questions. And I, and I do believe that the selectmen, I don't know if a memo came back, if not, it will, the selectmen would like the Planning Board and others to think about how we're going to handle this in the future with these new drainage structures and the new type of maintenance that goes forward, whether there's some sort of assessments or fees, and I would defer to Phil to correct me on this, but I know that is a big concern, that, that we have a mechanism.
You're doing a great job.
Huh?
You're doing a great job.
Because it's, it's with a new and more complex drainage structure, with the extra maintenance it requires after major storms and all that, it's yet another fee on the town, and, you know, there is feeling that this should be addressed somehow. To cover that additional expense, but because this was the first one, because it was nothing in place for it, they went ahead and voted, okay, let's accept it, this one, but let's solve this problem going forward as well.
Phil, do you wanna make any comments or anything at this point, clarifications?
First of all, uh, in order for the Board of Selectmen to accept the property, we have to have a public hearing. In order to have that public hearing, we have to have two recommendations, a recommendation from the Planning Board and a recommendation from Conservation Commission. And that doesn't have to be a positive recommendation, it could be, one could be a negative, it's just a recommendation for us to statutorily have the public hearing, uh, which we did get. And the recommendation that was made by this Planning Board, I'll read the minutes. Was that the Planning Board recommended to the Board of Selectmen that the town accept the open space parcel with the understanding that it's managed by a third-party land trust, and there's an acceptable conservation easement with the town and PLC. And when we had that motion, I specifically asked Alan what he meant by the town, just so that we were all on the same page, was the, the town was the Board of Selectmen. So the understanding, and I, we were told to read the minutes. If there, when we had that discussion, it was that the Board of Selectmen should read the minutes from the Planning Board on their recommendation. And just remember, these are recommendations, okay? The Planning Board and the Conservation Commission make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen are the ones who do the, the, the acceptance. There was a, as David mentioned, there was a easement that was requested that go to the town attorney. And it was determined that rather than spend taxpayer dollars to review something by the attorney, before we even knew whether or not the Board of Selectmen was gonna accept it, we would wait to accept it. The Board of Selectmen determined, decided to split this, there was nothing in any of the discussion, uh, at that meeting that the, it was referred to, that the Board of Selectmen referred to, or in this recommendation. Okay, that gave the Board of Selectmen any reason why they should not be able to separate the two issues. Because one of the issues they wanted to have a discussion was, is to, do we want to have that, uh, held by a third party, the land? It was pointed out that in the master plan, they talk about park, parks in that area of town. Well, we have parks in town, the Saret Fields, Roy Park, and Barnard Park, that there is no third party, the town owns that and manages those. So it was unanimously decided by the board that they would split that out and look at that, and take the benefit of that third-party management versus the town doing the management. There are many conservation parcels that are held by the town, that have no conservation easement, that there is no third party, that's just held by the town. And the board wanted to take a look and do its due diligence, and to see if there was a requirement, or what the benefits are of having the third party before they made the decision, and that's all the board did.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments for Phil? Barbara?
I just have a question. I think, 'cause some of the concern that I heard about this issue was the continuing public hearings. So the Board of Selectmen is looking at, we do our public hearings to accept the land, as to whether or not to take it. Are you looking that you need to have another set of public hearings then, once you do the, let's just say theoretically, you work it all, you decide on an easement? Does the Board of Selectmen expect that there needs to be another two public hearings then for the conservation easement?
I don't know if it's a definite, uh, whether or not we do it on, I mean, it's just a question that came up, and we didn't have the, the answer, so that's been looked into.
All right, so you're just dealing, so the decision was essentially to go forward with the ownership piece of it.
Correct.
And then to deal with the conservation easement issue independently.
Right, whether or not we have a third-party manager, what are the benefits of having the third party, or have the town do it just like we, we do other conservation land, and, uh, the parks that we have.
All right, and so, I think what I heard was the concern that if you start to open it up to other than third-party easement holders, or use of the land. That there might be a requirement for this to come back to the planning process for a new approval. And I think what I'm hearing, and what I would understand from a Planning Board, what you're envisioning are terms of, are basically negotiating terms of an easement. Now, I'm not saying I'm in favor or have a position on this, but you mentioned parks. So let's say the Board of Selectmen decided there should be tennis courts in the middle of it, David don't have a fit. So if you worked out the terms of an easement with the PLC, and somehow you worked out management, maybe we put the tennis courts right at the end of the drainage easement, so we could get to the tennis courts, so the town took care of the tennis courts. You would just incorporate that into whatever easement you worked out with.
But we really haven't had that discussion yet, we're not at that point. That's what we're hoping to do, when we have the benefits of the third-party management versus the town owning it, and weigh those.
Okay, was it brought up at all at the meeting, I haven't read the minutes, that there is this concern that if you change, if the Board of Selectmen elects to. Do something other than an easement with PLC over the open space parcel, that it's going to have to come back for new plan approval? Based on what David was talking about, all the public hearings that were noticed.
There was no discussion at that point, because we went by the recommendations in front, the recommendation in front of us, and basically the minutes that was suggested to, to do. And it was said, and it was explained as a, uh, an agreement acceptable to the Board of Selectmen, so that's the way we took it.
Phil, do you think that this, uh, these questions you're asking at this point are even valid questions based on this property itself, I mean?
Which questions are you referring to?
Well, the u- use of, of the open space as public parkland in, in effect, because it seems to me that in this particular parcel, that every bit of good, dry land has been utilized for the construction of the subdivision. Road and the house lots, I don't think there's a lot of other.
Well, when we walked it, there was some good, dry land on it.
Oh, there is some that you've, that the board feels could possibly.
We walked it all around the edge, all the way to the dam, Blackbrook, all the way to the end.
So you feel there is a possible potential for other uses other than?
Well, I, there is no, there has been no discussion of that specifically. There has been nothing, oh, well, let's, as Barbara said, put a tennis court here, there's been no discussion of that. The only points that were brought out was, the points that were brought out was, we're looking at having a third-party manage the property. The question comes up is, why do we want a third-party to, uh, manage the property? Okay, the question comes up about, uh, declaring the maintenance of the land, uh, who takes care of it, uh, who services, what happens if there's, uh. Bonfires, camping, and noise coming off the property and the police get called, how that, that's handled. Brought up that, um, in the, like I said, in the master plan, it calls for parks in the area, it just says parks, it doesn't say tennis courts, basketball, it just says parks. So we're looking at parks, recreation, uh, development of land for those specific purposes. And all we're saying is that we have land that's held by the town, Saret Field, Roy Park, and Barnard Park, which are used for recreation, that's owned by the town and managed by the town. We have conservation land all throughout town that's held by the town, not a third party, and we have some that's held with a third party. Look at it to see what the benefits are, compare it, and make a decision, and go from there, that's all.
Okay.
But it was always presented as being used for passive recreation only, and that's what the public understood through all the public hearing processes. And at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, they did talk about tennis courts and ball fields. You know, as if they were leaning towards considering those sorts of things, which flies in the face of the whole concept of passive recreation, and what the people understood was gonna happen with this land when they heard the presentations at the various public hearings. So I'm a little concerned that, you know, we're diverging from the information we've given to the general public at this point. And I understand we've got park, parks, developed parks in other parts of town, but there's also a need for passive recreation in this town, as well as active, active types of recreation. So I'm just a little concerned that it's starting, it sounded like we're starting to move that way.
Well, can I just respond to that? There was no more discussion than the discussion that I just said right now here at this point, just so that everybody's aware.
Jim?
Well, it'd be the same question, what, what are the conditions of our approval, and for example, if it's specified perpetually preserved passive recreation? Did not.
Did not. And, you know, I'll, I'll just say, you know, the master plan gets cited as, you know, this is an area that we need recreational opportunity, but if you read the master plan, you can read that to also say, and I think it did say, that a park in the east part of town is something that should be looked at. I mean, I'm, I, I think what I'm, I'm less concerned hearing Phil, I haven't read the minutes, that they've just decided to deal with the acceptance, which is actually a fairly big deal. As it is for development, there might be, just on its face, the idea of taking ownership of property in conjunction with the development, some objection from the public to that at the Board of Selectmen.
And if I can just add, the subject of parks came up, we had the public hearing, by present, uh, uh, citizens that came and spoke at the public hearing. They cited that the master plan called for parks in that area, and that's where it was brought up to the Board of Selectmen.
David?
Yeah, well, if I may, a couple of points. First of all, the, I mean, the whole purpose of the open space cluster, we determine how many lots can be built, we set aside not only the undevelopable area, but a percentage of developable area, that's part of the whole formula. This open space was being set aside to not be developed. Given that, then if you're going to have recreational use, the only recreational use that really fits is passive recreation. As far as the comments that were made at all hearings about the master plan, I agree, because I was the one who was making it every single meeting, I'm sure everybody got sick of hearing it.
I told you we're doing a good job.
So many times. But every time I stated that, I, I always said that in past, you know, referred to that in the context of passive recreation is the form of recreation that's appropriate here. And a couple of times, a question was asked was, well, could we build ball fields there? And I always pointed out that wouldn't work, that the site wouldn't, isn't appropriate for it, passive recreation is what would work, so I don't. I don't think it was, it was ever presented as this would be another Barnard or Roy Park or something like that. The fact that we have conservation lands that don't have easements is actually very, very bad. Those lands are not protected at all. If there's no easement on there and the town owns it, anything could be done with it, so.
All right, is anybody, anything new? Lowell?
Yeah, I'd like to say that just using the term park does not mean necessarily active recreation, you can have a park that only has passive recreation. So just saying park, it doesn't say, you should put all this other stuff on it. My other comment would be that, um, you know, as others have said, this has always been presented as passive recreation, and I don't have any problems with the idea of developing active recreation in places in town. But if that was what is, is gonna happen here, it should have been presented upfront.
Okay, any other discussion on this, oh, Kimberly, please.
Yeah, um, let me just add a, a few points. We currently have town-owned land that is in conservation, and, um, we are just physically incapable of monitoring and stewarding that property. We all know that the town is strapped for money, and we have no ability to even, uh, as a volunteer committee, it's one of our responsibilities to steward those properties. And we do a very inadequate job of it, because we have no, uh, ability to do these things. So we already have properties in town that we are incapable of stewarding, that have trash on them, that are being ran over by trails that the police can't get to or can't review. And the idea that we would, and, and I understand that the selectmen have concerns about putting an easement on a third party, so, because then that puts them ability to have a role in this process. But they also, it's a positive thing, it's because that gives them the ability to steward this land. And if you look at what PLC has done, they've created trails for passive recreation, they do great signs, and they have volunteers, they have a much bigger volunteer pool who's able to walk the land and steward it and take care of it. Whereas, I, I guess my frustration is, we were excited about this, PLC can't take every land potentially that they could within the watershed. And the fact that they were able to work with us and willing to work with us and able to, to be a part of this was exciting for us, and a lot of work went into doing this. And it's a little frustrating to have the town say, well, we don't want that easement, because we don't understand the positives to it, which are tremendous, because we do have conservation land in town right now that we are incapable of stewarding. Incapable of monitoring, keeping clean, keeping, uh, in proper use. And the idea that we have a third party that was offering to do an easement and work with us and be a part of this is a really great thing, and it's sort of frustrating for those of us who've been watching this happen, thinking. of us who've been watching this happen, thinking, I guess it's sort of, we're just sort of wondering if we can explain it any better to the Selectmen and as far as why this is such a positive thing, because we're kind of confused as to why it's not a positive thing, and why the town wouldn't want this, and it's frustrating.
Thank you. Excuse me, one second, Jim. Meg, I think we're all done with anything on our agenda that your expertise is required for, so if you want to get out of here, just wanted to let you know.
All right.
Jim?
Not that it'll particularly sway the Board of Selectmen, but a lot of other towns are doing it despite taking ownership and granting a conservation easement. A lot of towns we represent, because it does, it adds a layer of protection to protect it from the towns, and it's infinite wisdom, changing its mind, deciding to sell it to a gravel pit operator, whatever it may do, raise revenue. And it, it puts the burden on somebody else who's eager to do it. You know, we've just been doing, a lot of the towns, they've evolved out of taking the conservation easements themselves, for the reasons that Kimberly said. So it's not, this isn't some original concept, it's a common practice now.
All right. Well, there's a, the last, the last line in your letter says that members of the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board will be present at your January 31st meeting, 2011, to discuss this very important matter. So I guess at this point, any Planning Board member that feels strong enough about this to accompany the Conservation Commission to the Selectmen's meeting and state your piece.
Is it on the agenda, or is it a public comment thing? Do you know? Anybody know?
I don't think it's on the agenda yet, but it might be.
It, it was stated in the meeting, it would be added to, for discussion, would be added to the meeting.
All right.
All right. We have no other issues, we'll, we'll close this part of the meeting at this point. Anybody else have any more comments, or?
Are there any other parts of the meeting?
We do have one part of the meeting which I'm going to invite Alan up for.
Thanks, David.
And he may, he may decide to address it or not.
Maybe.
Come on up, Alan.
I make this...
Excuse me.
I just wanted to make one final comment.
I'm sorry, David, I didn't mean to...
It's a little misunderstanding, the Selectmen did not say, we're not going to do this, we're not going to do an easement. It's just that the discussion was going down the road of, well, we might consider this other possibility, and I don't really think that that fits for the reasons I stated in the letter. I just wanted this to be done as a point of clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If I can just add to the, what David had, is what I'm trying to do with the Board of Selectmen is try and get the Board of Selectmen to try to understand these drainage easements, and what the impact, and as Megan mentioned, the book that Public Works is putting together with all of the drainage issues, because they are something that we're going to, at one point, if we ignore them, at some point, they're all going to slap us at one time, and we have to get a handle on it.
Okay. Alan, can I invite you up here to, we, we held off on this, on the voting on the minutes because of our email?
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm going in.
So you, you do need to come up. We did not accept the minutes because we, we didn't want the record to be accepted without the clarification of...
Want to take an eight thirty break?
No. Barbara's looking at me, we cross eyes, and I'm not even thinking of it.
We did. It's eight thirty-five.
We can, we can keep it brief, Alan, and we can vote on the minutes, and then the last motion is adjourned.
Well, you're still the chairman.
That's fine.
I'm just a member.
Okay. Well, and Member Yaton, what do you have to say about that subject?
The only thing I want to say is that I may have, may, may have mistaken, and the vote was taken on the petition article for the rezoning of the parcel known as Edgecare.
Correct.
And I was called on the carpet by another member of a board here in town for not following some rules of order. And I'm not sure what rules of order...
I brought them with me.
...play out today, but it was, the question came, the question was made, is that I selected the person to vote on it, who was an alternate, and it was stated that I should have selected the alternate before any discussion of deliberations was made on the article. And I'm, I'm not a, couldn't find anything in our ordinances that says anything about that, so I'm opening it up to members of the board. My suggestion would be reconsideration of the vote as being the alternative with the chair not voting.
Why would we reconsider?
Yes.
Can I input something? When, when you selected Carl as the alternate for that particular thing, it was after the discussion, however, it was because Carl had said that he was going to recuse himself for the next meeting, not for, so that way, he voted for this particular meeting, and then Steve voted for the one that Carl was going to be recusing himself for.
Right.
And that's what started the pattern. It just didn't get reflected in the minutes.
You can just add it to the minutes.
Well, we can make an amendment to the minutes, and that will make a clarification.
I mean, I, I can say the zoning board does, has made it a practice because of some new, something that came through, that alternates can now participate in deliberations and things, but we, we designate who the person is before deliberations begin, and that's probably why that person brought that to you.
But it's, it's always been my understanding that every member of this board, including alternates, has a right to speak and reference any matter before this board, and that's the way I like to see it.
It wasn't that way on the zoning board.
And I believe Steve actually did a point of order right prior to...
Yeah, we did a point of order.
Making sure that you picked somebody prior to that. It was a discussion, open discussion, and then say, Steve, and then that's when I spoke up and said, I need to recuse myself from the next item.
So let me ask a question then, is it, is, are you saying that if I selected tonight, if I selected Carl to vote on a matter, does that mean Steve cannot have any input on the discussion of that matter?
No.
No. I want to make sure I understood that.
You, you want, you want the longer explanation?
Long's not too long.
We have this entity called the Local Government Center, previously known as the Municipal, that has a staff of lawyers. Some people in town think when they speak, they speak the truth. Some of us say they're just other lawyers, and lawyers will argue over anything. One of their lawyers, who as far as I can tell, was not one of their experienced lawyers and had never served on a board, wrote an article in the municipal magazine, comes out every month, in which she said that alternates should not be sitting at the table and participating in the discussion unless they are chosen to be the voting alternate. Instead, they're supposed to come to all the meetings, sit in the audience, and wait to be asked to come up and participate. Many of us who have done this for more than six minutes said, that is dumb, because what alternate's going to sit in the audience for days on end, hoping sometime they'll be beckoned forward to join the anointed? Now, you can come up with a legal argument on why that's necessary, we talked about it in our office and around here, and said, until somebody in black robe tells us we're doing it wrong, we're going to keep on doing what we do, because it makes sense. The legislature, in one of its few fits of wisdom, apparently was, was brought to their attention, they said, yeah, that makes sense. So to clarify it, they've amended the statute to make clear that alternates can participate in the discussions, as we have always done. That's what this came out of, I think. And the next corollary that is, you have to designate the alternate in advance before it participates or votes. Now, I suppose good practice would be to do that early on, but the statute also says that the courts will not require completed hearings to procedures by Planning Boards, because they know we're amateurs, making up the rules as we go along, being paid tons of money to do a lot of thinking about it. So I, I don't have a concern about this, and I think we can take a motion to accept that the appointment of Carl in this case was duly made with no, no reason to affect the outcome of the vote, and we approve it, and ratify the decision.
Thank you, Jim. Phil?
Also, in follow-up on Jim's comment, those articles, and whenever anybody gets advice from LGC, formerly Municipal Association, there's always a little caveat to, they highly recommend that you consult your municipal attorney.
Okay.
That's always in there, all right? And, and what, in, in my experience, when you go to the, some of the seminars that you have there, and in, in the past, and I think Jim probably knows them, I'm sure Barbara does, Bernie Waugh, he used to be the municipal attorney for, for them, and he used to always say, in the beginning of any seminar that he had, you know, what we discuss here and how we go through something, does not mean that this is the right way, and the way you're doing it in your town is wrong. All towns do things different. There's only one way that we can present here, we can't present all the different ways. We give, we present, and we explain things in one methodology, okay? So you just have to take that kind of with a grain of salt, and when you go back to your community, it does not mean you go back to your board and say, oh, by the way, board, we're doing it wrong, Bernie Waugh, the Municipal Association says that this is the way we're supposed to do. And that's exactly what, what Jim is saying on it. And just as my second comment, because I did get that email, and I did have my recollection, okay? As you mentioned, that we had that discussion, and it was perfectly correct, that Carl made the comment that he had to recuse himself on the next one, you said, fine, then Carl, you'll be here. And the irony of that was that the chair did not pick the alternate for his vote, because if you look at the vote, Carl voted in the affirmative, and the chair voted in the negative. So he did not pick a person that swayed the vote, the person he picked was the opposite. So...
So what we need to do here is have a, a motion to amend the minutes to reflect that, or...
No, I don't think we have to, we can just prove the minutes.
Okay.
If people want it on the record, but I, I think the discussion is sufficient unless somebody thinks differently.
Well, if nobody else has anything else to discuss, we will take it.
Well, just as long as the minutes do reflect what happened.
I think, I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes to reflect on...
The reason for the choice.
The reason for the choice.
Okay. So Barbara's got a motion to amend the minutes outlining the reason for the choice. Anybody want to second that?
Well, can we make that amendment to the line that Alan...
Right. I'm assuming that's going to be on page six or fifteen.
As, as he would not, not be voting on the next, he would have to recuse himself for the next following matter.
I understand.
So states the reasons that Barbara is suggesting.
Yes, that's why.
So you're going to second it then? Okay. So seconded by Jim. Do we need to have a formal statement of your amendment to the minutes, or just...
No.
...what we've discussed here tonight? Okay. Fine. All right, though.
Okay, all right.
Any, any more discussion on this matter? Okay. All those in favor of amending the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? And I'm going to abstain, because I was not at the meeting.
Alan abstained as a chairman.
I was not at the meeting. Okay. The next thing is the, is the minutes themselves.
Motion to approve is amended.
Thank you.
All those, any more discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, lay aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? I'm abstaining, I wasn't here. Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Phil.
Seconded.
Seconded by Collins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're done.